I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any guests or visitors here that would like to be recognized? I guess not. Any public comment? No. We'll go to approval of the minutes of October 2nd.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes as written. All in favor? Oh, Julie, call the vote. All right. You all set?
Did you get Shelley?
All right. And next order of business, approval of the executive session minutes.
I move second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, you want to call the vote? Okay, we all set?
No, Mr. Dray.
All right, what was the vote on that, unanimous?
There were four extensions.
Four extensions, okay. Superintendent Directors report. Mr. Brown.
All right, so, go vote, will you? None, there we go. You know, trying to keep it, you know, pretty real, let me see. Uh-oh, Donnie. Can you hook me up?
Try it.
Oh, there we go. Oh, and then I got to go back. Okay. So, did want to make sure, I know we have some other business later on, but want to make sure we give you some updates on the ongoing amazing things that are happening. So, our LPN program, you know, we presented at the beginning of the year, stacked class, filled up everything else, doing some great work. Last week, they sat for the end class exam, which is one of the essential exams. And the first time, keeping in mind that they have 48, 49 students, way more students than before, than usual. And they sat for the exam and they had a 100% passing rate for the first time. So, it's really exciting that Andrea Carrato and Terry Duchon, two folks from the LPN program, just doing an amazing, amazing job. The other piece, we had talked back in early fall and, you know, into summer too. The certification piece that they have to be doing. Again, we certified with COE, but in Massachusetts, they passed a new law that says that you have to certify with an organization that is specifically for nursing. COE covers everything. So, we're transitioning to ASIN. We put in our application to be considered a candidate. You can see here, we were hoping to hear earlier because we want to get this process going. We're supposed to hear by November 14th. That will let us know if we're officially candidates and we can start that process. Our goal is to wrap that up as quickly as possible into the spring so we can basically say goodbye to COE, move on from them, and then we're just sticking with ASIN the rest of the way. Continuing to reach out and kind of make those connections. The folks from LPN reached out to Belmont use the Community College. They worked to set up an articulation. So now, all our students going through the program, they can, one of the courses they take is Human Growth and Development. They now can get full transfer credits from taking that class here that can roll over onto the college and everything else. So, just some great stuff going on at LPN. We certainly want to celebrate them. We used to talk about this all the time, but we haven't done it in a while. COVID kind of, I think, knocked Cyber Patriot off its feet a little bit, but it's up and going really well. Both our IT instructors, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Hollier, and both are two instructors from ROTC. There's two separate teams, well, there's two separate divisions, the open division and the ROTC division. And as you can see here, so this is just the Massachusetts schools, but in the opening round, both our open division team is first place overall. Our ROTC team at number four. But they're then first place for ROTC programs in the state. So, Monty Tech leading the way in both divisions. Other two teams doing very well as well. So, it's great to have Cyber Patriot going again. We will keep you updated. It's about every two or three weeks, they have another round. But it's great to see that program up and running and the fact that we have so many people involved in it. Couple of other things, working with colleagues and everything else. Speaking of ROTC, last week, Ms. Carlson, Diane and I were able to join a group of the cadets, First Sergeant Dillon, over at Needs. Remember, we've been associated with Needs for a long time. They had been doing the graduation over here, but to be honest, after COVID, they kind of decided they were going to shrink down their graduation. So, they haven't had graduation here for a while, but we stay connected. And one of the ways we stay connected is in 2022, as you know, every year, if you don't know, our ROTC does a march. It's a fundraising march for how many miles and they get donations and everything else. And they make some really good money. In 2022, they had raised over $25,000 during that march. And what they decided to do that year was to sponsor a dog. So, as you know, it's a long process to have one of these dogs become an official service dog. Smokey was the dog's name, chosen by the ROTC folks. So, you can see Smokey right down here doing his thing. Kind of creepy that he looks just like the dog that's in their logo, but that's okay. But the family, so actually, the dog had been trained and was paired up with a veteran. The veteran wanted to go in a different direction. So, they've been working now more and more. Needs is not focusing just on veterans, but also students with disabilities. So, this was a young man and his family from Maryland. Smokey has become part of their family. It was wonderful talking to the mom. The mom gave the example about how her son, immediately, he had usually had trouble going into open places. And they went to the mall with Smokey and he was calm and he walked through the place. He was having a great time, it was just a fantastic story. So, huge thumbs up to the ROTC guys doing great work. And then just working with our colleagues over the summer, this past summer, the Hartford area Career Technology Center, Hartford, Vermont, not Hartford, Connecticut. They use the old kind of career center model in terms of towns start their academics in the morning, then they come over and they visit this agency and they get to do their workforce training in the afternoon. They were looking for a place to come and just learn about how they might enhance their own instruction. They reached out, I said, "Come on down." So, a group of their teachers came down just yesterday, toured the building, spent a couple hours in the shops. Crystal Brown, their medical assisting person, loved being in ours. They actually loved seeing the animatage table and everything else. So, it was great. It's always nice when you know that people want to come and see us because they know that we're doing good things. So, two great opportunities there. Thank you to the folks that had some time. I realize it's short times, people coming back from work, but we did have some folks stop by at the open house. What you would have seen, and the thing that we're really excited about, is boards going up. Sheet rock's going up all over the place. Both the carpentry program and electrical have a lot of theirs already up. Remember, the plumbing, we can go a little bit slower because that's not opening up till next year. But the stairways have been installed that go up to the mezzanine for the storage over the classrooms. You know, you can see some of the, all the HVAC work that's gone on here, both inside and outside, the split units and everything else that are out providing, do air exchange and everything else. You can't really see it well, but the bottom left here, our electrical crew installed parking lot lights. They're all solar. You know, again, part of the clean energy stuff that we, it really helps us get some points for and everything else. So, great work there. And then masonry, this is one of the things that we're keeping our fingers crossed. What they're doing is they're preparing one of the spots for one of the ADA lifts. There's one at each entrance. The company, we're being told, it's in New Hampshire and we're meeting with them tomorrow. But they come down to inspect the site of where the lift's going. And if it isn't perfect, they'll say something about it and say, "You still need to do this and this. We're not bringing down the lift until then." So, we don't want this to slow us down. So, Masonry's been doing a great job, Dick Demers and his folks and everything else. So, we got a lot of good things going on there. We were hoping for some time in November. We're probably bleeding into December a little bit. But we already, electrical already came in. They got their inspection. We're done with the electrical inspection. We're all good to go. The planning board's going to come down to start checking out. Although I will notice, or let me point out to you, if anybody who drives by there, we had got so much trouble from the planning board in terms of our landscaping and that we had to have beautiful plants. They told us exactly what plants to have and everything else. Well, this week, they started to do some of the roadwork on Westminster Street right in front of us. Guess where they decided to park all their machinery today? Right on top of all our plants and everything that we had just planted. So, we are going to be calling DPW tomorrow and letting them know, "Hey, I bought our plants," and we'll see what happens on that. Remember, they offered originally to do some paving for us and now we've already done all the paving, but maybe we can find a deal that they can pay us back for. But anyhow, great work down there. Yes, sir.
So, snow flies, gets cold, where do we put these kids?
So, outside, our fallback right now is going to be the greenhouse. You know, it's pretty good size. We think we can get them in there and everything else with the machinery. Everybody's going to keep praying for the ongoing warm fall that we've been having, knock on whatever it is. But yeah, we do have a fallback just in case. So, we'll see how it goes. Electrical is all set, they're inside. It's just the house carpentry that we have to worry about. And they're hardy folks too. New England, somebody was down there, Diane was saying, oh, sorry, Shelley was saying, they're New Englanders, they can handle it. So, correct. They all got sweatshirts, it's great. All right, keep it going. You guys remember, we did do the Students with Disabilities Grant last year. Great program, went really well, couple of our graduates there. They just announced the next round of the grant. So, we will be applying for that grant to move on. Very excited about that. The other thing is bottom right there, CAPS Collaborative. They actually came to us in September-ish. They were so excited with the program, they came down and they said, "Would you guys just mind, we'll pay for it. Could you guys just host the program and allow access to the shops?" So, we're actually even doing something in the fall right now with CAPS. We're going to get going. So, we'll have that, assuming we're going to get this grant rolled right into the spring and we'll keep on going. So, really happy to have this program still going. Also really happy to share, if you remember, it's ironic because we're still working on the bid. Tammy and I were going to finish it, the bid for the spray booth. If you remember way back when, we had the anonymous donors who donated the money to help pay for the spray booth that we're trying to finish up now. They reached out and they said, "Do you want to put something else in again?" So, we put in for another grant with them and they awarded it to us. So, again, it's the exact same company that we worked with last time. Two shops are going to benefit from this. Many years ago, some of our construction guys went to one of the trade shows and they had these simulators that allow folks to simulate heavy equipment in terms of a job site and everything else, in terms of driving, you know, the backhoe and everything else. So, that's what we're going to get for house carpentry. And then engineering, if you've gone into engineering, it just, it looks old when you go in there. It needs some new life. So, a lot of the equipment that we're going to be getting for engineering gives an opportunity to have some more hands-on activities, more current activities and everything else. So, really excited to be getting that grant again. And Katie Whittaker, keeping those connections has been fantastic. Very quickly, just wanted to show you this because where we stand on competitive grants, the money that we've been getting from all these grants and everything else, when we have our conversation about admissions in executive session, keep in mind that those, these last three years and how well we've been doing with grants because that's going to be one of the issues that we need to be talking about. And then, quickly on admissions, we're going to be talking about one, a different aspect of admissions later. But Chrissy Lamy is here, our Dean of Admissions. She just finished what is one of her many busy weeks, but certainly the stretch of VIP, open house, you know, the whole deal is a real big deal. So, we thought we'd take the opportunity for Chrissy to share what's been going on, how's this changed and everything else. Again, this is just more about the process of what we're doing to work and get access on the kids. So, all you, Miss Lamy. Someone's got to turn on Miss Lamy's microphone though.
So, every year, we start off our kind of fall admissions process cycle with what we used to call Principal Counselor Day. And we've, we've thought to this and kind of reframed it. We've actually called it now Admissions Day. What we realized is that in many of the schools, the principals really are not very involved in the admissions process. It's sometimes administrative assistance, it's sometimes a teacher. So, we renamed it to Admissions Day. And when we sent out the letters inviting the schools, we said, "Please bring anyone who's involved in the process." And so, we had a lot of different people come this year and we received some good feedback about that, which was nice. And we also made a special invitation this year to ask them to bring a member of their special education team with them. There's a lot of new staff in our sending schools. And what we did is had John Bazikis, who's our special education team leader, talk with those team members about the process, just explaining we are a full inclusion model school here. He runs all the transition meetings, so really just talking them through that process. So, it was just nice to have a new kind of group of faces that now understand the process. We shared that we had updated our scholastic scoring. I know that's been shared with you previously that now students who score 70 to 100 receive full points for their academic score. And as always, the guests were invited to stay for lunch. That's always a highlight. Some of them get to see former students who are now in culinary and are either making the food or working as the servers, which is great. And we always give them little gifts. Oftentimes, we try to give them something that they can use back in their classrooms or their offices, but we also try to give them something for them. So, this year, it's a little photo, we gave them a little cookie jar that at first we were just going to put candy in. And I was able to speak with Adam Taylor, who's our baking instructor, and he and his students made some treats for them. So, fill that for them. And then for anyone who's not able to attend Admissions Day, we understand it's hard for them to leave the building. I go out and I visit any of the staff right onsite at their school, deliver the materials and explain the process to anyone who's new. So, the highlight, oh, you have a question?
Yes. Talking about the admissions policy and with the, when you have all these, our sending schools come in, how, did you get any constructive feedback, positive, negative, about the change that we made in our admissions, especially with the grades? How did the sending schools feel about the changes we made with our policy?
Positive, for sure. We, in the year that we had taken out the sending school recommendation, we received a lot of positive feedback. I think a lot of them felt pressured, you know, to kind of score one way or another. But they've been very appreciative of the changes that we've made. And I can share a little anecdote about that. So, one of our sending districts, Wingington, actually has not been coming to Tour Day, unfortunately. And this year, we almost had it. And I will say, their guidance counselor is fantastic, Kayla Hamilton. I love working with her. And she had shared, when she was kind of getting some kickback from attending Tour Day with her students, she shared all the changes that we've been making. And she said, "Monty Tech has really been working on this and expanding their scoring." So, I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback. Yeah, great question, sure. One of the highlights, I think, of Admissions Day is the past few years, we've been trying to just highlight different programs or different things. And this year, we brought down Madison Perry, who is in the red jacket. She's a senior from Princeton in graphics, as well as Nikki Favreau. She's a Sterling student in our auto body collision repair. They both made it to the national level for Skills USA. So, to bring them down and have them talk about their experience was really cool. Madison won the state pin contest. And so, she talked about how she had to go down and do an entire presentation. And Nikki's story was really neat because she's in a, you know, traditionally more male kind of field. And she talked about, they couldn't even find a shirt that fit her correctly down in nationals. She was just really, really proud that she made it to that level. So, our visitors were just really excited to hear about that opportunity. So, from Admissions Day, we then segue into Tour Day. We have the motto where we bring in some of the schools on that Friday half-day and then the others come in Monday on the full day. So, you can see, overall, we had about 950 students participate. Those are the listing of the schools that did participate. Some of them bring all their students, which is the goal. Others do only bring interested students. But what's been nice, the past few years, the state regulations require that we not only receive the sending seventh and eighth grade student and parent mailing address, but also emails. And having those parent emails has been pivotal. It's really, really helpful. And so, what I do is I actually create a flyer and I email it to all of the schools that only bring interested students. I email it to the parents to let them know, "Tour Day's coming. Would you like your child to participate?" Here's where they go to get the permission slip. So, really get that information out to them. And then, so what happens when they come for Tour Day? They visit 12 to 14 stops, depending on how long they can be here. And not only do they visit various shops, but they also get to stop in an area where they hear about clubs and extracurriculars. They visit another area that talks about athletics. We have a room that talks about Skills USA. And then our Student Support Services talks them through the application process. So, they're not just getting to see the shops, they're learning about lots of other opportunities here as well. And they each leave with a little bag that has a flyer about VIP, an application, a flyer asking them to then come to Open House, which is Monday night, as well as clubs and sports offered here and colleges and careers that our students have gone on to have after they graduate. Open House is that Monday night. We changed this up. It used to be that in the fall, we had Career Awareness Night and it was just basically showcasing all of the shops. We rethought this because Open House in the springtime, when you have the academic teachers here, when you have those special educators, it was truly a little too late for families in March to be learning about those pieces. So, we rethought it and said, "Why don't we do that in the fall when a lot of families are really looking at their high school options? We want them to be able to come in and ask all those questions earlier in the process as they're making those choices about whether they want to apply or not." So, that was a nice change. We, this picture, we're very proud of. So, each year, I reach out to students and I ask, "Does anyone speak a second language? And would you be willing to come to Open House?" Or I use several of them on Tour Day as student translators. And this by far was the biggest group I had. So, you can see some of our pictures there. We had students who speak Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian Creole, and knew this year, Gajati. I had to ask Raj how to pronounce that. So, that was great. And I said to them, "You know, sometimes you might be asked a question, other times you may tour the school with a family and other times it may be quiet, but that's okay. Just the fact that you're there and people are coming in and seeing that this is an option, hopefully the word's going to continue to spread to others to, 'Please come visit our school. We have lots of things in place to help you, you know, be as informed as possible.'" I do an overview presentation. So, prior to actually opening the doors to the building and letting people walk through, I do a presentation at 5:00 in the Performing Arts Center for anyone that's just new to the whole Monty Tech process and explaining about, "How do we do things here? We have an alternating week schedule and walking them through the process and town quotas." Just for anyone who's new, I think that's been a nice change we added a few years ago. And then we have tables set up right in the lobby with our Student Support Services staff. They're answering all kinds of questions, handing out our flyers and applications. And then finally, our first session of VIP is currently up and running. We have two weeks done. We didn't have it last week because it was Halloween and we're starting up again tomorrow. So, we have 262 students participating. You can see the towns and the numbers. This by far is our highest number of shops that have been offered. A few years ago, we updated the way that we do VIP. Previously, the students would come in as a school and I would randomly place them. And we changed that up. One of my auto technology instructors, George Russell, had a really nice idea a few years ago and said, "Wouldn't it be nice if the students could see what they're really interested in?" So, I, you know, have kind of tweaked the process and it's really working well. I get a lot of positive feedback, not only from our instructors, but from the students and parents. The students come in and they, when they register, it's a Google form, they tell me four shops that they would like to see. And I do my best. I mean, sometimes they maybe only get three out of four, but for the most part, many of them see a lot of what they'd like to. So, it's off and running, it's going well. I have my second session already open and within five days, it already filled. So, it's a very popular program. I let families know right away if they didn't get in, there's a waitlist. And if students don't show up, I'm on the phone calling them and I fill those spots. So, we get as many students in that want to participate as possible. Any questions? Yes?
Is it really 66 from Phillips County?
Yes.
That sounds like that's more than our age of children.
Narragansett, I have two buses coming from Narragansett. Yeah.
Is that eighth grader's home?
Yeah, they might be. I mean, I could double check, I may have.
That would make a little more sense, but neither that's the law.
Perhaps, yeah, I'll have to look, but yeah, yeah.
Those are eighth graders or?
These are seventh and eighth graders.
Seventh and eighth?
But we do give priority to eighth graders if it kind of gets to that point because it's their last opportunity to participate.
Yeah, I noticed on the Tour Day one that Athol didn't send anybody. Did you get any kind of feedback as to why they didn't send anybody?
So, we try every year. We're just, they've had a lot of changes over the past few years in terms of administration and they just don't want to participate.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The VIP program, Sterling, didn't participate anymore?
Which one?
Sterling?
Oh, they are, so they're the next session.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so these are the schools that participate in session one. I have another chunk that participate in session two and then the final schools. It's truly for transportation purposes that I only can send buses to each school once a year. So, they're coming the next session. Yeah, oh yeah, but everybody participates in VIP. I have a lot of good participation and support from the schools on that. So, that's a good thing. Yes?
What about Fitchburg?
Fitchburg's the third session.
Okay.
So, yes. Okay, thank you.
I always like to remind everybody when we do get an opportunity for Chrissy to come up and speak. Chrissy is the person who interviews the 840-year-old kids all year. And we are, she is an asset to our community and our faculty and really happy to have her as part of our team. Thank you, Chrissy. All right, I think that's it for us for now. I think Ms. Carlson's.
Our student reps are not here this evening because they're actually, that poker pop rehearsal today, so that's happening tomorrow. But Chrissy, again, as I just can't echo enough what Tom just said. I know that we often highlight things that Chrissy does and it's so nice to have you here, actually in the flesh. So, people get to put faces to names and hear the wonderful job that you're doing. So, Admissions Day, done, covered because Chrissy did an outstanding job. So, we can wrap that one up. We did, I know some of you joined us for our Fall Advisory again. In your packet, you'll see a list of new members that have joined us this year. Again, as you know, every year, we are thrilled to be able to fill slots in people from our communities, certainly industry, post-secondary and parents too. Can you scroll down a little bit? And you'll see, again, new members. So, we had a total of 330 members that were RSVP that evening. Of course, as you know, culinary and our students, a cafeteria staff doing outstanding jobs, serving a wonderful meal. And then people go on to their meetings. We did start, for those of you who were here, I know some of you were here, but we did start in the auditorium with a meeting, really highlighting some of the program successes to give everyone updates. And it's nice for folks to hear what other programs are doing at the same time. We hosted PSATs on October 23rd. Again, this is something that's for interested sophomores and juniors who wanted to prep for the SATs. We did offer the PSATs for the SATs. We did offer the PSATs here in the building in the morning, which is nice. One of the things that we've discussed in the past, in the past, we sometimes offer them on a Saturday, but really sometimes that creates a barrier for students who aren't able to have transportation to get here on a Saturday morning, whether they're working or parents are working, they're unable to get here. Offering at John's School, that really allows access to all students who are interested in taking the PSATs. That was a great success. Tour Day's an Open House. Again, I can skip through that because Chrissy did an outstanding job. The MIFA Financial Night, every year we do offer, we partner with MIFA, we do an admissions day typically in the spring, and then we do a financial aid in the fall. And really, that's good for seniors and their parents to come and really learn about the financial aid process. We have a wonderful partner with Worcester State University. We had Ryan Forsyth who came and joined us and really did a fantastic. I actually attended as a parent because I do have a senior in our building. I mean, it was just a wonderful opportunity, so informative to really learn about all of the access to what we have for resources. And also, our school counselors were here as well, really working with families to enable a system through the process as well, especially for some of our first-time college attendees and families to assist them. It's quite the task applying for college and financial aid. And again, Open House. And then at the bottom, you'll have upcoming events. We did just on Monday night have our NHS induction. We inducted 61 members into the National Artist Society. I believe last year we had 48. It was just a wonderful event. I always say when I read what these kids have done both through the application process, it's just unbelievable to see the opportunities and how involved our students truly are with service and leadership within our community. So it truly is very humbling and wonderful that they're part of our community. And past reviews. And again, if you're bored tomorrow night, the weather looks outstanding. We do have a powder puff game happening between our junior girls versus our senior girls. Friday, I just want to highlight Friday during the day for ninth period, we are going to be doing a Veterans Day Assembly with our Rothy Program. And then that evening, we do have the ball. So I know some of you will be attending that as well, but it's a wonderful opportunity and event that our First Sergeant hosts every year, and we're lucky to be part of that as well. And that is it. The rest of the calendar is there. And then next in your packet, you have the school enrollment reports. Are there any questions there?
Did we skip over the field trip?
We did.
Okay.
Okay. Good. All right. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
All right, should we go back to the field trip? Get that taken care of? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the district committee votes to approve an out-of-state field trip for 17 grade 12 students in the welding program to travel to Providence, Rhode Island to Capco Steel Erection Company on December 3rd, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at no cost to the students.
Second motion. Motion in session. Comment, Mr. Brown?
It's just, this is one of our regular trips that we do. I'm sure you've kind of heard about it several times. The great support. It's always also nice to get the kids down and even they, you'd be surprised how excited somebody is to go to Rhode Island sometimes. It's a good time.
I spent, I had a great time in Rhode Island.
There you go. So did I.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Julie, can you call it? All right, motion carries. Where to now? Do we do the enrollment report?
We did.
Okay. We don't have any retirements?
Nope.
I see we have Worcester coaches. All right. Any question on the winter coaches? If not, we will go to policy. Ms. Swenson?
Moved that the district committee approved ADDA quarterly requirements, ADDA-r quarterly requirements as a reference, ADDA-e acknowledgement form for second reading and remove policies ADDA-e-1, ADDA-e-2, and ADDA-e-3, as these are no longer needed as they're incorporated in the ADDA quarterly requirements.
We have a second. Anyone have any questions? Policies? If not, can call a vote? All right, we good, Julie?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say thank you very much for doing this for the second reading. And I do also want to thank Julie because she has really participated in pulling this together since she has to do the process and the program. And it's been great working with her to get this streamlined down and as efficient as possible. Thank you.
Okay. There's no objection. We're going to go out of order here, and we're going to go to executive session because we do have guests that want to participate. I think the, I think we're going to need to do this on two separate.
Yeah, I can do, I can do the two under the one, and then we can switch it up.
Okay. Why don't we take the other one, the admissions one first?
Sure.
Any motion on that?
Yeah, do we have one for the executive session, Julie?
I have one for both. We can do, I can.
Yeah, I'll just split it up.
It'll have to be at one or both.
We want to do the admissions one.
So if somebody reads that, makes the motion, executives, I can do the vote for the vote because I can bind both of them together. I didn't know you were splitting them.
Yeah, so we just want somebody to make the motion.
Questions, Chair?
Yes, sir.
One of these appear to be admission.
No.
So what's the?
Well, why don't you explain what that is?
So the admissions one deals with the fact that, and I'm pretty sure it's under B, there is a likely vote of litigation based on the admissions issue.
Mr. Chairman, if you go into executive session in Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21,3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If the committee may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair has so declared.
Is that a second? Okay, before we take a vote on this, we've had some discussion. Some of the members are concerned that discussing potential or litigation that hasn't happened yet and we don't know that it's going to happen, is that a proper reason to go into executive session? And we'd like, we'd like to hear from the attorneys on that.
So I should, I should have, Garrett has been here for a while. A lot of you have been here for a while, so you probably remember Kay Hodge as well. We're happy to see Kay out here. She hasn't come out to Monti Tech in quite a while, so. And she loves the drive. The drive is fantastic, right, Kay?
It's awesome.
Yes, true, too, at 5:30. Great time to be driving. Anyhow. Okay, John was, wondered if you could just speak to the fact that, you know, the reason why we need to go into executive session for potential litigation. I guess there's some people that just want to make sure that that's okay, that we do what we're doing right now.
My understanding that what you're going to be talking about is strategy for litigation because it is, it's different. You've got a letter from Desi that describes what they want to do. That's a piece of, that's one piece of litigation.
We haven't seen that weather.
Yes, Julie's got mostly, oh, because we're not in executive session.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any concerns regarding going into executive session for this issue? Mr. Hurley?
If we go into the executive session to discuss our admissions policy, does that include us from speaking to members of our community about our admissions policy? Since it's been, well, what exactly can we speak about?
That's a hard question to answer because it's like, the limitation is you can't speak without what it was that was discussed in the executive session about strategy, about what you're going to do. Right now, we've got a letter that suggests that by November the 22nd, you are under a deadline to provide to Desi a response of your, what your, you know, what your response is to their allegations about what they want to do.
So we're going to go into executive session before we see that letter?
We're going to give you the letter. Let's begin at the executive session, Hurley.
But yes, I mean, that's, that's really what, what we're here to talk about, sort of the strategy of how we can approach this to defer to the second deadline date. Presently, you have an extension, because I understand.
Yeah. Folks, if I can say, I can guarantee you, it is important that we go into executive session. I don't want anybody to worry about that. There's so much has happened in this past week that goes beyond just, it's not just about our admissions policy. It is about Desi and what they're thinking about doing to us and everything else. And we're going to be discussing what we want to do in response to that. And I, I just, I can assure you, this is a very important.
Mr. Brooks?
Move the motion.
Would we be allowed, would we be given information regarding what we can't talk about after?
I think so. Yeah, I think, I think we, you're definitely going to talk about a lot of it because it's public. It's, it's our response to the mark that I think we definitely want to make sure we keep in this area. But, but yes, I would say absolutely.
That's what we should, I tie my hand now also. They can't talk about the admissions policy.
Yeah, I get it.
Because specifically, you're saying.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Because you're going to understand that, I promise you. Don't worry.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if, if we go through the executive session and then come out at the end and say, well, this, this isn't anything that needs to stay in executive session, we can immediately vote to make it public. Can we not? So, okay, thank you.
What's asked him? Mr. Olson, question? No?
I was trying to move the vote.
Oh, okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second to go into executive session. It requires a roll call vote. So we'll start with Mr. Commodore.
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes, Smithy. Yes.
Yes, are we going into two different executive sessions?
If you want to do it that way, we can do a split or?
Well, when, what was the motion?
For, like, it was just the one.
Yeah, just the one.
Just the one. Okay, so.
That's the most important right now.
Okay, so we're going to do just, that was the motion. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Desi? Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. We are in, we will be in executive session. Thank you to both of you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Do you want these? Yeah. Yeah, that would probably be a good thing.
All right. We did, we did, well, we did, Diane did policy, right?
Yes, you should policy.
Eric, you got anything for workforce?
Are we back?
Yes.
My mic back on here. Yes, quickly, that we did get a response back from the MRPA. I think I have that right. From the MTA. So they did accept our acknowledgement of the two separate bargaining units as we had voted at the last meeting. So we are sending them information details when we get a little more free time with the administration who isn't tied up with other activities. But there, that will be ongoing here soon. So they did, they did sort of accept our, our motions. So we'll be meeting soon for workforce.
Student advisory, Melanie?
There is a tentative meeting set for the 20th of November, but I haven't got confirmation yet. So that's it.
Okay. Graduation gift. Dr. Turigny?
I'm looking for the beginning of next year. There's no need to have a meeting now.
Okay. Financial planning?
Getting close to that time, but not quite.
It is, yeah. Okay, how about the fundraiser? Ron?
I have not had a meeting. I've been doing a lot of work in finance. And again, I'm looking to begin next year.
All right.
I do have a financial person I need. So I have to, for myself.
All right. Financial statements? Any questions for Tammy on the financials? Student activity accounts? Okay. Acceptance of FY '25 IDEA grants. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the district committee accept the IDEA grant sped 240 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of $420,925.
All right, a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, can I call a vote? All right. We good? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the district committee accept the fiscal '25 ESAG grants from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the amount of $272,731 for Title I, $35,040 for Title II Part A, and $21,588 for Title IV.
All right. Any questions? If not, can we call a vote? Yes, sir.
I move this committee accept an anonymous donation in the amount of $440,000 funds to be used to purchase heavy equipment simulators for carpentry and masonry and to revamp engineering technology program.
Second. I believe you spoke to this earlier? Yep. Any other questions? If not, we'll call a vote.
Tom, I have one question. Can we try those?
Sure.
No way.
Okay. Teacher informational proposals. Are you a teacher?
Oh, no.
School committee chairman report. I'm going to skip that now. I'll come back on comments. We have school committee informational proposals. Anybody have anything? School committee comments? Go around the room here. Anybody over here? No? This side? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is the problem. In light of the recent election yesterday, where MCAS was voted that it's no longer required for graduation, which is good. I did a lot of homework, so I finally made my decision on how I was going to vote. And I did a lot of research into the MCAS and the whole work. I guess my curiosity is, it's more just a curiosity. I'm not looking for hard numbers, but what does it basically cost our school to do MCAS every year? Between, say, teacher salaries, the cost of the test, the grading?
There's no, off the top of my head, you know, even, you know, we do some, we call boot camp sessions with some of the kids beforehand. So we might bring in a few subs to help cover teachers that are helping run those boot camps. But besides that, for costs, that's about the only additional cost. Everything else, it's all done, you know, at, during the school day at the same time. So there's really not any additional cost to it necessarily.
Is there a cost of the test? Being that?
We don't know. The state, the state.
You know, MCAS is actually administered from a private for-profit company, is it not?
Correct, yes. This, yeah.
Well, they make the money off.
Well, this, yeah, but that's all done by the state. The state makes the contract with, with the folks that make MCAS exam, and they pay for all that. It's not, it doesn't come down to the local.
I'm just curious to see if they're paying the big test off.
Yep.
On that note, Mr. Raymond, and I'm sure Mr. Brown will agree, we should be making clear that Monti-
you should be made clear that MontiTech does not teach through the test.
Thank you.
Oh, I know.
Yes.
Who else? Anyone else?
Thank you, Jada. Thank you, Jada, for the.
Oh, yeah.
Bill?
I, I did want to ask this year, I appreciate years past the holiday gifts that we get from superintendent or from the school. This year, I would like to forego mine and put that donation towards the student gift fund, if that's possible, as opposed to flowers.com.
I don't know. I'll have to figure out what the, where the money line is and everything else. But we'll get back to you on that.
I'm in agreement with Bill, too.
That sounds good.
If I get flowers, I bring them down to my neighbor right away because if they stay in my house overnight, they'll die. Anyone else? All right. I just want to say, I haven't, Eric and I haven't crossed paths for many months between my illness and what he's got going on. And I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate working with you for two years. And given your whole family situation and everything, I think the leadership you provided here was above and beyond what we should reasonably expect. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Moved to adjourn?
Second. Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All in favor, all opposed? The ayes have it.